Welcome to the regular Bellevue City Council meeting for February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I know you could be many places tonight, and I thank you for joining us here. Before we get started, I want to read something that should be a commendation. And next year it will be, but this Saturday, February nineteenth, will mark a significant anniversary for our nation and the Japanese-American community. On that date, in nineteen forty-two, eighty years ago, President Franklin Roosevelt signed Executive Order nine oh six-six, which authorized the United States government to create military exclusion areas, frequently referred to as internment camps, for Japanese-Americans living on the West Coast. Among those incarcerated were three hundred women, men, and children, all residents of Bellevue. Order ninety-sixty-six is a troubling event in our history. The well-documented cost was heavy, both emotionally and financially, with many Japanese-Americans losing their homes, businesses, savings, and property. And Bellevue still feels the loss of this important community today. The eightieth anniversary is an opportunity to educate others on the fragility of civil liberties in times of crisis and the importance of remaining vigilant in protecting the rights and freedoms of all. And I want to take this opportunity to reiterate the City of Bellevue's commitment to inclusion, access, equality, and opportunity for all. Let us continue to work together to ensure that this never happens again. City Clerk, could you please do the roll call?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nguyen-House.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers on.
Here.
Thank you.
Councilmembers on, could you please lead us in the flag salute?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 So that passes, or any nays, okay. Passes. City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for oral communication?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This evening, there are eight speakers on the pre-registered list. And with that, I will call the first speaker, who is Craig Speesley. And Mr. Speesley, can you hear me? Mr. Speesley?
Yes, Speesel.
So sorry, your time begins now.
Mayor Robinson and members of City Council, Deputy City Manager McComman, and concerned citizens of Bellevue. My name is Craig Speesel, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself, my wife Elizabeth, who reside on Ninety-Ninth Avenue Northeast. In advance of tonight's informational overview of the privately-initiated proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment for two thousand and twenty-two, we are voicing our opposition to the CPA for on one-fifteenth, one-hundredth Avenue Northeast. We do not believe this CPA will provide any public benefit to the community or the city at large and would only create a myriad of negative effects and irreversible damages to our neighborhood. The recently-approved Northwest Bellevue Comprehensive Plan was completed through a thorough and lengthy public process. To now amend the plan so soon after its completion would raise substantial questions regarding the credibility and integrity of the city's planning process. Approval of this CPA will set a dangerous precedent for the city, dismissing the impact to the community and signal to the community and voters that the council places the financial interests and influence of a developer above those of a community. As the Lockleaven Community Association and others have documented, this application includes several inaccurate statements, including the applicant's assertion that claiming rezoning is necessary for commercial development. This is neither relevant nor accurate. As proof, look no further than the Park Central Townhomes immediately north to this property. The parcel also zoned as R thirty added eight apartment townhomes to the housing stock. No reason was necessary, and this development refutes this need. As the planning department, the planning commission, and ultimately, City Council considers a geographic scope and threshold review, we strongly oppose that any other properties be considered. These include any properties on Northeast First, One-hundredth Avenue Northeast, and Ninety-Ninth Avenue Northeast. Allowing either a spot zone for this CPA or including other similar properties would create, over time, a domino effect, changing Northeast First from a residential neighborhood to becoming a shop and retail corridor, creating an unnecessary intrusion to the established buffer from downtown. Thank you for taking time to listen to our concerns. It is our goal to protect our neighborhood and enhance our community. And with your help, we can achieve this goal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Speesel. The next speaker on the list is Mark Walters. Mr. Walters, can you hear me?
I can, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, thank you, your time begins now.
Thank you. Good evening, Bellevue City Council. My name is Mark Walters. I reside on Ninety-seventh Avenue Northeast, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself tonight and not on behalf of any organization. Tonight, the City Council will be presented with an application to amend the Comprehensive Plan to change the zoning for a large parcel in my neighborhood to be redeveloped above the R thirty height and to include first-floor retail and/or food service with either residential or a hotel above. This is what the application was submitted to do. It's my understanding that amending the Comprehensive Plan is a legislative matter and a rather significant decision, not to be taken lightly. We do know that the applicant did not own the property when it submitted the application to amend the Comprehensive Plan on September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. As you probably know, the applicable provision of the Land Use Code states that a property owner or authorized agent of the property owner may propose a site-specific amendment to the Comprehensive Plan. And on the issue of the applicant's ownership, Assistant Attorney Matt McFarland wrote in a December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one email, quote, "The record shows that the applicant purchased the subject property on around December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one." This was about a hundred days or so after the applicant submitted the application on September fifteenth. I and others have asked for proof that the applicant was an authorized agent of the property owner. To be clear, the owner of the property on September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, when the applicant submitted the application, and we have not received any documents to establish the fact of authorized agent of the property owner status. And in my opinion, this should be jurisdictional to the City Council even accepting the application to amend the Comprehensive Plan. On the issue of authorized agent of the property owner status, Mr. McFarland wrote in an email also dated September twenty-sixth, it's the same email, "If you have any evidence or documentation that would establish the applicant was not acting as an agent of the property when it submitted the CPA application in September of two thousand and twenty-one, then please submit that information to me for consideration." Now, we've raised this issue with the Planning Commission, and Mr. McFarland has told them essentially, "Don't worry about it, he's got it covered." But we think that this is a jurisdictional issue, and we should see some written documentation that this particular owner actually had the prior owner's authorization to act on its behalf on September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. And so I asked the City Council to inform itself and confirm, firm for itself that the applicant was an authorized agent of the property owner when it submitted the site-specific amendment to the Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. The next speaker on the list this evening is Billy Heatherington. Mr. Heatherington, it looks like you're using an older version of Zoom, and I cannot unmute you. So I'm going to move you to the other side and ask you not to turn your video on. I'll pause while you are moving. Mr. Heatherington, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you, your time begins now.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Council, and happy Valentine's Day. My name is Billy Heatherington, and I'm a member of Lyona Local Two-Forty-Two. I'd like to speak this evening in support about the presentation under Item Seven, Apprenticeship Utilization Policy and Program Proposal. Also, I wanted to flag earlier this afternoon, I sent an email to the entire council from Congressman Adam Smith that was sent to me on the importance of registered apprenticeship. I wanted to thank Councilmember Barksdale for his leadership for bringing this up for discussion to the council this past September. Since then, I appreciate the time that the majority of you have taken to meet and discuss this idea and and the concerns that each of you might have. Additionally, other members of the building trades and myself have heard nothing but positive feedback and conversations with Bellevue College Intern President, former Governor Gary Locke, the Bellevue Chamber, Haylene Sigmund, who is a Executive Director of CITC, the Construction Industry Training Council, which is a Bellevue-based business, Bellevue School District, and several, several other groups in the community. Since our last discussion in September, we've seen the federal government pass a one-point-two-trillion-dollar infrastructure package that estimated to funnel over ten billion dollars into our state over its life. Combine that with the straight state transportation package that was just introduced this last week, valued at over eighteen billion dollars. The funding is there to maintain and upgrade our infrastructure into the future. The need for skilled construction workers is only going to increase over the next decade. Our hope is that a city of, city, the city of Bellevue, excuse me, and this council continue to look at apprenticeship utilization and adopt a policy in the near future, future to provide a greater opportunity for our youth and those looking at a career transition into the building trades. And I'll concede my time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heatherington. The next speaker on the list is Matthew Wick. Mr. Wick, can you? I do not see you by name on the list. If you are connected under a different name, can you use the raise hand function? Okay, I do not see him raising his hand. We'll call the next person on the list, which is Mansour Williams. And let's see, there's an Eddie Williams, Eddie Williams, is that you? Did you sign up for oral communications, Mr. Williams? And can you hear me?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you, did you sign, was, is that your name?
Okay, gotcha, yeah, Mansour Williams is my first, first name and all Eddie my middle name, so.
Perfect, thank you, your time begins now.
Yeah, yeah, well, thank, thank you for having me, City Council. Let me just start by saying, this is actually my first time joining in, so actually, I was calling in to speak on Item Number Seven there, which has to do with apprenticeship utilization opportunities and all here in the city. And let me just start by saying, actually, I'm a current resident of Bellevue, have been for the last few years, and actually, before that even, I worked downtown here at the higher regency for about a good seven years and also been in the city for about a good decade and have had the opportunity to see it grow marvelous, marvelously over time and also when I heard about the opportunity to speak on behalf of my local Two-Forty-Two Lyona, being an apprentice myself and also the city is definitely excited to do so. And a little bit about my story, my story after I, after the pandemic, actually, working at the, in the hotel industry and all, of course, we all know what, what happened there, so was out of work for some time and, and a good friend of mine had mentioned to me about the trades and how to go about getting in and getting more familiar with, so I actually joined a pre-apprenticeship program called A New, I believe it used to be called Pace, but started there, it was a twelve-week program, which got us used to more with the trades and hands-on experience and all. And so with that, actually, I decided to join the, the local Two-Forty-Two Union there and have been working ever since with QWIT on the Sound Transit Light Rail Expansion and all from Federal Way north of here, and I've got to say, just being an apprentice and starting out with a whole new career, it's been very rewarding already, learning something new every day going forward. And to actually be a resident here in Bellevue and see how far the city has come in the last decade and all, even, even more so excited to see where it's headed and definitely wanted to go ahead and speak on it and let it be known, I'm all, all about growth and progress here in the city, and if there's ever anything I could do to help out, of course, I'm always willing to do so. And with that, I will go ahead and concede my time.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. The next speaker on the list is Jason Rock. And Mr. Rock, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, your time begins now.
So, cause my, my, yeah. So hello, Bellevue City Council members, I'm Jason. I'm a tech employee of a company that has their offices in the Bellevue Place Building. I'm here because I support prioritizing the housing needs assessment and separating it from the overhaul, overall Comprehensive Plan discussions. I'm here because as a young affluent person, I think it's partly on me to sound the alarm about what I see as runaway housing prices across the region that I call home. Last year, my wife and I began our search to buy a home. However, however, even though my wife and I are both highly-paid tech employers, we were effectively priced out of Bellevue. As a result, our search for a home that we could afford could not include the Bellevue area, and we purchased a townhome within our budget in Columbia City, Seattle. This lack of affordability in Bellevue has locked me into a fairly substantial commute. When I think about the housing needs assessment, I think about a survey. A survey that would identify cases of other people like me and my coworkers that have been effectively priced out of Bellevue, even.
Mr. Rock, if you can hear me, it appears that you have a bad internet connection and we.
And tying these two things together strikes me as unnecessary. And I hope that the council will look into how they can accelerate the housing needs assessment rather than delaying it until they can come up with a plan for what to do as they move forward. Thank you so much, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rock. The next speaker on the list is Andrea Ornaleus.
Charmaine, can we ask the last speaker to submit his written, his spoken comments to the council in writing, please?
Yeah, Mr. Rock, I'm not quite sure if you heard me, but you cut out at about, with about a minute left of your statement, and it looks like you might have had a bad internet connection, so if you could send those comments to the council at council@bellevuea.gov, that would be fantastic. And then, let's see, Andrea, can you hear me? Also, again, it looks like you're connected with an old version of Zoom, so I'm going to have to promote you to panelist and ask you not to turn your video on. And I will pause while you do that.
I can hear you.
Can you hear me now? Okay, perfect, thank you, your time begins now.
Evening, Councilmembers, I am Andrea Ornaleus, married, mother of five. I'm speaking in support for Item Seven, Apprenticeship Utilization Policy and Program Proposal. As a community member, supporting apprenticeships is very important to building the workforce. It creates pathways other than college for young adults and helps establish partnerships with union organizations, city and schools, and I can say this because of my experience. I started my career with a new peer apprenticeship. After the twelve-week program, I chose to join the laborers' union. During the apprenticeship, I was able to pay off debt, save money, and buy a home. Also during the apprenticeship, I was able to be promoted on multiple occasions. I went from being close to homeless to owning a home in a matter of years. After realizing the positive effects apprenticeship has on provided and provided to my life, I now mentor youth and women looking for a career path that isn't traditional, but it fits them. And through apprenticeship and have, and have been able to get their lives back through apprenticeship, prosper and also give back to the community. So I ask that the council considers the lives that can be changed, the community that can benefit, and the youth that will prosper from apprenticeship utilization. Thank you, and I will concede my time.
Thank you, Ms. Ornaleus. The final speaker on our pre-registered list is Leslie Geller. And Ms. Geller, can you hear me?
I sure can.
Great, your time begins now.
Thanks, good evening, Councilmembers, my name is Leslie Geller. My address is one-five-one-zero-two Southeast Forty-third Street in East Gate. And I'm speaking tonight regarding the Consent Calendar Item H, Ordinance Six-Five-Five-One, adding six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from the King County Conservation Futures Open Space Acquisition Program to the CIP. I am requesting that this money be used to fund a neighborhood park in East Gate in the area between the Frontage Road on the south side of I- ninety and Newport Way. First, I want to thank the city for recognizing the need for a neighborhood park in East Gate south of I- ninety as indicated in the Parks and Open Space System Plan Update two thousand and twenty-two, the draft of February third, two thousand and twenty-two. Page forty-four notes that East Gate is one of only a handful of neighborhood areas in Bellevue that displayed deficiencies in walkable neighborhood parks that are significant enough to prioritize the acquisition and development of new neighborhood park sites. Lattawood Park, by the way, I should note that I live on the south side of I- ninety. And Lattawood Park, which I have walked to many times, it's a pocket park, is the only East Gate, the only park in East Gate that's south of I- ninety. It's on the boundary, literally the boundary line with Cougar Mountain, Lake Mott neighborhood. And it's up quite a steep hill from where a majority of East Gate residents live. East Gate Park and the South Bellevue Community Center is not actually a neighborhood park as people would generally think of one, one which would have grass and picnic areas and children's play areas at a minimum. So, in closing, I hope that you will prioritize the lack of a neighborhood park on the south side of I- ninety and East Gate when determining where to allocate the six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar parks and open space acquisition funds. Thank you so much for hearing me out this evening.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Geller. That ends the, our pre-registered list of speakers this evening, so at this point, I would ask if there is anyone else connected to this meeting who would like to make communication to the council, please use the raise hand function or star nine if you're connected with a phone. And Mayor, I do not see any additional hands that would close oral communications.
Okay, thank you. Let me just make an adjustment here. Okay, so next, we have Council Business and New Initiatives. And Councilmember Barksdale, I believe you have something you want to present tonight, could you go ahead, please?
Well, thank you, Mayor. All right. All right, so this evening, I'm looking for support to direct staff to return to council with details about the fiscal and legal implications of the apprenticeship policy proposal. And I do just want to take a second to thank the public, public comments from Mansour and Andrea, and I'm sharing their experiences. All right, during this presentation, I'll provide a brief, brief background, share what I think is the opportunity along with the proposed apprenticeship utilization policy. And I'll also address a few questions that have surfaced and share next steps. So workforce development and specifically, technical and trades education is mentioned as part of the Achieving Human Potential Strategic Target area of our council vision. And apprenticeships are a workforce development strategy in that they help people gain the skills necessary to work in the skilled trades. In September, I raised the idea of considering apprenticeship utilization requirements and asked what questions each of you might have on the topic during council business. But this is not a new topic for this council. From what I found in January two thousand and fifteen, Councilmember Lee expressed support for apprenticeship as part of the state legislative agenda. In July of two thousand and nineteen, Mayor Robinson recommended adding an objective for apprenticeship programs to the council vision. In July of two thousand and twenty, Councilmembers on asked whether the Economic Development Plan included apprenticeships. And when I raised the idea in September, a large majority of council members expressed interest in apprenticeships, including Deputy Mayor Nguyen-House and Councilmember Stokes. As we know, Bellevue is not affordable for many lower-income earners in our community. Affordable housing strategies help by lowering the cost of living, but that's half the story. The other side of the story entails helping people earn more, be it as a high school graduate who seeks an alternative to college because they need to start immediately earning to support their family or can't afford college, someone formerly incarcerated who still needs a pathway to earn when other options are maybe unavailable to them, someone who is in career transition, like we heard earlier tonight, or someone who simply prefers a skilled trade as their career. One of the key findings from our human needs update is that there's a decrease in middle-income job opportunities, which makes it harder for people at lower incomes to access better jobs. It also notes that a living wage for a family in Bellevue is higher than in other parts of King County. On the contracting side, there's a shortage of skilled labor, but a growing need for it to work on public works projects. This impacts Bellevue as we grow and as our infrastructure ages. In two thousand and twenty, six out of seventeen public works projects in Bellevue were over one million dollars, but only one of those projects had apprentices, and that was the Mountain to Sound Greenway Project. Our two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-seven CIP budget totaled six-hundred-and-sixty-two million dollars. While not all capital improvement projects would qualify for apprenticeship hours, there are a broad spectrum of projects that would. So apprenticeship utilization can provide well-paying job opportunities, improving affordability, and help build the pipeline for the much-needed skilled labor. The proposed apprenticeship use, utilization policy would require at least fifteen percent of apprenticeship hours on public works projects that are over one million dollars. In the event a contractor does not meet the required hours, they would be assessed a fee of ten dollars for each hour, and that revenue would go into a fund to support workforce development. Staff would regularly report apprenticeship performance to council. And flexibility is built into the policy to allow waiving apprenticeship requirements. If requirements conflict with federal, state, or other grant conditions, there aren't enough apprentices to meet the requirements. There's a disproportionately high ratio of material costs to labor hours. The contractor can't meet the requirement after putting forth their best efforts to meet the requirements, or the city manager deems it appropriate to waive the requirements as long as this is consistent with the goals of the policy. Anticipated costs of an apprenticeship utilization policy are changes to the proposal and contract language, tracking to ensure compliance and equity, and establishing an accountability structure for when any enforcement action is necessary. In the footnote, you'll notice that Kent currently spends approximately thirty thousand dollars a year to administer their policy. Apprenticeship utilization provides a number of benefits to our community, the city, and contractors. For the community, it provides a pathway to earn when other options may not be available to them and can potentially afford them the opportunity to work closer to home. For the city and contractors, it will help with growing a pipeline of skilled laborers to work on public works projects. This table compares the proposed apprenticeship utilization policy to apprenticeship utilization policies for Shoreline, Kent, and Burien as going across the top or from left to right relative to each provision going down the left. Kent is in the middle because their policy has more nuance than Shoreline's policy, but not as much as Burien's. The proposed policy is most similar to Kent's policy, but includes a couple of additional provisions that exist in Burien's, namely, reporting DEI and outreach requirements that align with needs consistent with areas of interest in Bellevue. Here are responses to some of the questions raised about apprenticeship utilization. I'll just emphasize that the focus is on larger public works projects that are one million dollars or more performed by any registered training agent. I believe any minimal costs are outweighed by the benefit to our community and the opportunity for Bellevue to play an active role in helping feed the growing need for skilled labor. As you can see here.
Councilmember Barksdale, can you go back? It's.
Absolutely.
Need a little more time with this one. Okay, thank you.
As you can see here, we're currently at the blue mark discussing the proposal. Next steps include staff assessing the feasibility of the proposal and returning to council with details about the financial and legal implications for consideration. If adopted and adopted. If adopted and allocated funding, staff would execute the policy by designing and implementing the program, regularly reporting back to council and making improvements as needed. Again, I'm looking for support to direct staff to return to council with details about the fiscal and legal implications of the apprenticeship utilization policy proposal. And I'll just note that in terms of the resolution that's in the packet, it's more of a sample of what we could adopt, but I'm not committed to it.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'm gonna take questions. If you want, if anybody has a comment or question, could you raise your hand? Councilmembers on.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to give my colleagues a chance to ask questions first. Actually, perhaps Councilmember Robertson and Councilmember Stokes can go first.
Okay, Councilmember Stokes, go ahead. Councilmember Stokes, I think you need to unmute first.
Thank you. Actually, Councilmember Robertson had her Robinson, Robertson had her hand up first, but I will. You want to go ahead, Jennifer?
Go ahead, John. I just saw your hand up first.
Just wanted to set it up. Good. I think this is amazing, and I think it's something we talked about for a long time. It's always been good, positive conversations. I've never heard any, the many councils over the years have a negative approach to this, and I appreciate Councilmember Barksdale's efforts in this and putting together a very robust and very comprehensive and also very, frankly, understandable. A lot, a lot of times you get involved with these things and that they're kind of mixed up and all. I think it's set out for us very well. It's cohesive with a lot of our policies and discussions before. And I think the proposal to send this further to staff to do work on it and come back to us will help us, you know, have more information about what this, what the effect would be. And then we could have really good conversations about how we make, make this thing going forward. It's not something, you know, we're going to say we're all for this tonight, but I think a lot of us are. But let's put it on a path and and it's something that we need now and not two or three years from now. So I'm excited about it. And I think we have a pathway to get to a resolution of it and then come back in a reasonable time period for council to make a file to see.
Okay, Councilmember Robertson.
Thanks. I actually have a question for staff. Because normally when we do one of these, we know what the estimated time it will be, what the, you know, the timing on delivery, whether we have staff or financial resources to do the study. So I didn't see that information in the packet. And, and I also didn't absorb everything in the PowerPoint because it was some new information that wasn't in the packet. So my question really is for, I don't know if it's Nathan or someone else on staff, do we know how long, you know, what's the estimated impact on staff and budgetary resources to do the study? Question.
Yeah, Mayor, if it's okay, I'll respond.
Yes.
That's something we would have to put together. We would anticipate getting this on the work plan regardless, but as far as the timing is bringing it back, we would have to get back to the council on what that might be.
Okay. Okay. So, so first I'll say I think that this is a really great idea and it's worthy of study. But like all good ideas, we need to make sure that we have the resources to do it. And I don't know, sitting here today, what the impacts would be. If we have the resources to do it, I'm all for it. If we have to put something that's a council priority on the back burner, then that, that warrants further discussion before we greenlight it. So, and I'll just say this, so just so that as staff is developing a scope and work, you know, work plan estimate, I'd like the work to include outreach to labor, outreach to businesses, an evaluation of best practices, economic impacts and legal review. And if we can, you know, we can bring that back with that estimate and impacts on the work plan. As soon as we have that, I'm, I'm happy to look at it, weigh it, and if we have the resources to do it without putting a priority on hold, then I'm all for it. And I, like I said, I think it's a great idea. We just need to be cognizant of the impacts on the work. We can't just say yes to everything immediately, but I'd like to see how it works on the work plan. And I'm hoping that we can say yes to this immediately, but I need that information before I weigh in. Thank you.
Councilmembers on.
Yes, thank you. You know, I thank my colleague, Councilmember Barksdale, for bringing this forward because we do have a lot of construction that's happening currently in the city as well as the funding that's going to come from the state as well as the infrastructure package at the federal level. Apprenticeship is already utilized in many agencies in Washington State. And a lot of the provisions that are in the proposal are already part of established apprenticeship programs for other public agencies. So I support the staff moving forward with evaluating the fiscal and legal implications. I would just add that I'd like us also to make sure that when we look at benchmarking knowledge from existing programs that we broaden beyond the three cities that were mentioned. Because I think that when I think about our capital program in comparison to those three cities, I think we might be, we might have more construction. And so perhaps learning from some of the other agencies might also be helpful. So agencies like City of Seattle, Port of Seattle, San Transit, King County, they all have established apprenticeship programs, and I think we could also learn from them. And then I would add that also in addition to collaborating with the school district and CITC and Labor and ANEW, I think there's some benefits to collaborating with labor and industries because they already have an awarding agency portal that collects a lot of the information directly from our contractors that are doing our work. So to the degree that we can leverage an existing database that exists already, we can hopefully minimize our fiscal impact and maximize on the ability to work in partnership with the state agency as well. So just a couple of thoughts there. And then I would say that, you know, I'm really excited that we're looking at the workforce part of this. I would also encourage that since we do have an interest in workforce development and apprenticeship, that we should consider advocating for the current Senate Bill fifty-six hundred that talks about expanding apprenticeship and potentially advocating for that as well as part of this work because it's both helping build the pipeline to have workers for apprenticeships as well as providing the venue within our own construction contracts to make sure that that happens. So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I see, I think Deputy Mayor and then Councilmember Lee.
I believe Councilmember Lee was the former mayor. Sorry, but happy to, happy to move ahead. No, I have great comments thus far, and I too appreciate Councilmember Barksdale bringing this forward as he rightly indicated during his presentation. This is something that I have an interest in, and I think it's good that we indeed do move this forward. But I also believe that Councilmember Robertson has some, some, some good questions. And certainly, you know, if we're going to do this right, let's do it the right way. So, you know, hard look at best practices, the outreach to labor and to businesses and industry, and then also the impact to other priorities. Certainly during our, during our last retreat, we had a discussion about priorities. This one I don't believe came up at that time. That doesn't necessarily mean it's not a priority now. But, you know, I just need to understand if we adopt this priority, what other priority may drop off or not get as much time or attention as we previously thought it would. So understanding that impact, but would be important, I think, for, for all of us because certainly all of us had priorities that we're passionate about and want to, and want to see, see move forward. So, so supportive of this, but certainly would like to have some of those questions answered. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Barksdale mentioned my name, that I supported apprenticeship, absolutely. So I want to compliment him for bringing this up in this fashion. I think it's important that we do discuss this. So I believe the merits, you know, its importance, and our economy is changing. And as many reasons that's been stated. But there are other reasons, however, you know, I think we all have our own way support this, but you know, it may all vary in some way. And I'm looking at this from real big picture. I'm, you know, involved with the economic development for the whole region. And workforce development is one of the very important piece of the economic development. And I think the city Bellevue, you know, it's like Councilmember Barksdale mentioned, it's right along with it, and not to mention, obviously, human capital. The one, one thing I want to make sure is that we are not just narrowly looking at just for Bellevue because it is a, a, a all-state, all-industry, all-workforce, all-economic development. And I, as a result, I think we need to be more, you know, more look at how other entities that have a responsibility, maybe more directly or indirectly, whatever way. You know, such as was mentioned, the state has a real responsibility. And they are like Councilmember, you know, as I mentioned, they already are looking at it. And obviously, we have to work with the labor union, work with the industries. And then we have to look at other cities, because work, job goes throughout the whole coast state. Hopefully, you know, not, just not the whole state, but the whole country's economy is tied together. So I'd be happy to be, you know, the place that can begin this. But our program cannot be just focused shortsightly on just what we do because we're limited to what we can do. The success would not be as, as easy unless we know who are the players, how we can connect, and what are the basic driving force. So I appreciate some other cities doing it, and I think we should probably should step in. But we need to have our program the way we want to structure it. I just want to mention some of those. Included also, we need to be looking at community colleges. You know, what they are doing, what are they doing to train these folks? And obviously, the most important stat we mentioned is labor industries. And another thing is, I want to mention, which is important, is WMB program. You know, people already are trained, people already ready. People represent a lot of labor force, and that would include, I'm sure, apprentice as well. And so in order to make it all work, all these pieces have to work together. And we've been, you know, as Councilmember Barksdale mentioned, you know, I've been around for a long time. I know how important it is. But it takes the right element, the right parties, the right emphasis and the timing and the needs. And I think this is all kind of working together. I'm glad to see that, you know, there's this, this kind of impetus. So I think that we need to include WMB is one of the important. We've been talking about that WMB, the state has some programs, some other jurisdictions have it. But what, what, what more can we do about this? The other one is we need to have all this understanding so we can prioritize them. Where you can know what the city can do, you know, what the city's, you know, ability would be in relation to other. Because it's going to be big. It's not going to be just what the city does. I hope it's going to be comprehensive. Another thing that we talked about is, we talk about advanced manufacturing, right? That's part of it. You know, when we train people, we need to train them in the areas which they don't have experience before. And well, it's probably going to have the advanced manufacturing, or other cities may have, or the, other cities may be better suited. But these are all topics that need to be discussed in terms of economic development.
Okay, that's good input, Councilmember Lee.
No, I think I've covered almost everything, but there'll be others that I think we need to talk about. That's why it's important to have the staff looking to get us the information, give us as much as we need. And then we can decide what, how much we can do about this. Thank you.
So, you know, I, I really support this idea, and I thank Councilmember Barksdale for doing the research and giving this presentation to kind of move us along faster in our consideration of it. My dad joined a union at age fifteen in Canada when he worked for Boeing. And he hired union workers throughout all his projects when he had his own firm in San Francisco. So I know the value of these workers, and I really know that our workforce is aging out. And so this is not a stretch ask at all. I think most of our developers are using apprentices right now anyway because they understand the importance of replenishing our workforce. I'm excited to partner with the Bellevue School District and Bellevue College. I've been wanting to do this for a long time, and I know Councilmember's on, and I have talked about this for a number of years. So I'm very pleased to see this come forward. My only question is how best to do this. So I do think you've expedited the process, Councilmember Barksdale, and I thank you for that. My question to the council, I think, is we have two ways to go about this. Either we ask staff to work more than eight hours, and so tonight we would vote to give permission to work more than eight hours to come back with all the questions, the answers to all the questions that we've asked tonight. The other option, we have our retreat coming in March where we sit down and we look at all our, our priorities. And everybody puts their ideas in, we look at our work plan, and we decide which ones we're going to do first. And so that would be a way of doing it. I, I have a little concern about some of the things we voted on last year when a Councilmember's on's proposals that got full council support, we've never seen back at the council because everybody's so busy. Staff has been so busy, and I worry about supplanting things like that with a new idea. So I would like to kind of get a feel from the council whether I know everybody supports moving forward, I'd like to get a feel about how you'd like to do it, whether you'd like to have a motion tonight to do more than eight hours for the staff, or if you'd like to wait until the retreat where we can sit down and discuss our priorities. Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mary. You teed that up beautifully. So I think that you described exactly the situation that I was struggling with because there's so many things we all want to do, and I really want to do this, but I need to see it in the context of all the other things. So my preference would be to talk about it at the retreat as part of the priorities and the work plan. But I would ask, my ask to staff ahead of that is to get some sort of an order of magnitude because it's, it's, as we've known from prior retreats, it's really helpful if we know what our capacity, both financially and human resources, is to do more priorities, and if they're big or small or medium, you know, what's the order of magnitude? So I need to kind of know, we need to know the order of magnitude as we're looking at our priorities so we can decide, okay, we want to do three more smalls and we'll take off a medium if that's the trade. So if we can have that order of magnitude ready on this, or at least the best guess, I think that would allow us, and any other priorities that are competing, that would allow us to be really thoughtful and effective at determining what our work plan's going to be for the next couple of years. So I think that that's the way to go. Thanks.
Councilmember Stokes, I saw your hand up.
Yes, actually, I think we're all kind of saying the same thing. I agree with Councilmember Robertson's looking at this, and we've all in, you know, over time period, talked about how do we manage all these things? And sometimes you have to take advantage of something that really rises to a level that we hadn't thought about a year or two years ago, although we've been talking about this a long time. So I think the pathway which has been suggested is that, and we're talking about the timeframe, we have a retreat coming up shortly, and for this conversation to be positive and productive. And for this conversation to be positive and productive, I think we should go ahead and authorize the staff to expend more than eight hours to answer questions and respond to some of the things that Council Robertson, Councilmember Newen House and others of us who've discussed this and Councilmember Lee, and come back with us so we can have a real robust discussion. Because this, this is something that is core to Bellevue's future. And it's a very, very important thing at this time in our history. So I think that's the path that I see is we have, give staff to come back and give us some really good information. And I think they have a lot already, so it's not going to be a difficult thing. And then we have the discussion at the retreat and then we can move this along.
Okay, so that you are voting for the eight, more than eight hours, I hear. Okay, Councilmembers on.
Yes, I agree with Councilmember Stokes that we have momentum right now with some of this information. And I would support having staff spend more than eight hours on this. And now that we have more of this information as a baseline, we can certainly help staff with providing additional resources and people to talk to. I think there is going to be peer support from some of the agencies that have been using this for a long time. I spoke with Leyburn Industries today and Jolene Skinner has committed to giving a presentation to staff so that we can understand what they currently are already doing with data and metrics, which actually then reduces the fiscal cost of implementing this program. And I know that there are other agencies that are familiar with apprenticeship that can help take the information from where we are today to something that we can move forward with from a policy standpoint. And that's something that if we do vote to have staff spend some time, then I'm happy to spend some time with staff, pointing them to some of the resources from the other agencies that have been also doing this work for, you know, 10, 20, 30 years, so.
Councilmember Robertson, I see your hand up again.
Yeah, I just, by question, I would just come back to my question to Deputy Manager McComman. I don't even know if the ask is for 10 more hours of staff time or 500 more hours of staff time. So I can't really vote on the eight hour rule tonight until we know the order of magnitude. And staff has not worked up that information. So I definitely would propose that we ask staff to work up that information and then discuss this, how it's going to work in the work plan at the retreat.
Councilmember Stokes.
Well, I suspect that that will take more than eight hours to do that. I, this is a very business friendly, this is a very economic development process and program. And we're coming up to the retreat shortly. And if we're going to have a real robust conversation, I would like to have staff have a little more than eight hours to do this. We're not talking about, to say that maybe 100 to 500 hours is not realistic, that's kind of, you know. So I think, I think staff can handle this. We're not asking for, you know, a full blown program put forward. But do some work that will enable us to have a better conversation at the retreat. And I trust staff and the mayor can work with them on this. And we'll have a better conversation at the retreat if staff can help kind of frame this and raise some questions. And we can all, you know, be prepared for this as well. So I don't think it's an unreasonable request and I think it's something we can manage and will help us make good decisions. And some of the things that Councilmember Lee mentioned are ideas that will be talked about in this, so.
You know, I, I think, you know, anything, any further work from staff is going to be beyond eight hours. Because Councilmember Barksdale has already worked with staff for up to eight hours on this. So, and I think that if there is an interest, you could put a limit on the time spent by staff so it didn't get beyond. I don't think that's necessary personally. I'm also, this business about reporting back to council. You know, I know that you're very interested, Councilmember Barksdale, in the numbers as am I with affordable housing. But I tend to get that information on my own and it's, and ask it to be publicly brought to council quarterly. I just, our meetings are pretty full, so I'm not sure how much time I want to spend overviewing the results of this, but go ahead, Councilmember Barksdale.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, are you talking about the results of this feasibility assessment or the results of the regular reporting? I was anticipating that also, that could be a written report, it doesn't have to be a verbal.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Any more comments or questions? Who would like to make the motion? Councilmember Barksdale.
All right. I move that we authorize staff to spend additional time past the eight hour rule to further investigate the fiscal, legal, economic implications and the impact on other priorities.
And I will add that, wait a minute, and I'll add to the motion so that we can further discuss this at the retreat.
So that we can further discuss that at the retreat.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Thank you, Councilmember Barksdale.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, we are almost at the hour. Let's do the consent calendar, then we'll take a break. Is there a motion to pass the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so let's come back at 7:10, please. We'll get started again, you can hear me, right? Yes, okay, thank you. So we have two study session items tonight. Mr. McComman, would you like to introduce them?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Robertson. The next item is an informational overview of a privately initiated proposed comprehensive plan amendment for 2022. Today is the introduction to the council of the potential amendment. And the presentation will review the process going forward, including work by the planning commission and when it will return to council. The presentation is for council's information and no action is needed today. So now I'll hand it over to Emile King, Assistant Director for Planning, and Kate Nessie, Senior Planner, both in the Community Development Department.
Thank you for the introduction, Deputy City Manager McComman. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. Tonight, staff are here to introduce council to the privately initiated comprehensive plan amendment applications for 2022. This year, we have received one privately initiated application. In past years, the numbers ranged from one or two up to a handful of private applications in a given year. Before we jump into the presentation, I'd like to offer up a few opening comments. As was noted during oral communications, the comprehensive plan is a very important document for the city as it sets forth the vision for the city, goals and policies, and a series of land use maps that guide development and property zoning designations in the city. Careful consideration of these annual comp plan amendments and engaging the community has been a hallmark of the city's planning process over the years. As council is the ultimate decision maker at both the threshold phase and final adoption phase, staff will clearly highlight those steps for you tonight. So at this point, I'd like to hand things over to Kate Nessie, who is the staff lead for this plan amendment.
As has been said several times, this is for information only. There's no action to be taken right now. It's a summary of the 2022 Privately Initiated Comprehensive Plan Amendment. So tonight, I'll be reviewing the process for privately initiated CPAs. I'll introduce the one amendment that we have this year. And I'll give a summary, a brief summary of the comment that we received. So the, in Bellevue, the annual amendment process is in two phases, the threshold review phase and the final review phase. During the threshold review, planning commission considers the geographic scope of the proposed amendment and whether to include neighboring properties. And then planning commission recommends to city council whether the amendment should be included in the 2022 CPA work program. And council decides that, along with all of the other CPAs, initiated CPAs. If it passes the threshold review, then planning commission recommends and city council makes the ultimate decision based on the merits of the proposal, whether to amend the comprehensive plan as. The deadline for submitting privately initiated comprehensive plan amendments was September 15th of last year. We introduced the amendment to planning commission on December 8th. And now we are introducing it to council today. Next month, or the end of this month, planning commission will consider the geographic scope. And they will hold a public hearing likely in March. And they'll make a decision, or a recommendation on the threshold review. City council, probably in early April, will consider the CPA work plan and take action on whether to include this amendment in the work program. If it is included in the work program, then planning commission will study it against the final review criteria in the land use code. And they will hold another public hearing and make a recommendation to council based on the final review criteria. Then council would see it in November and take action in December. The privately initiated comprehensive plan amendment that was submitted this year is for 115 100th Avenue. That is a former chimney condominiums that burned in a fire in 2016. The amendment, or the proposed change is a change from the land use code designation multifamily high to neighborhood mixed use. And the site is about one acre, it's across from downtown park. As I said, it's, has a multifamily high designation. There's one zone within the multifamily high land use designation and that is R30, 30 units per acre. It's surrounded by single family and multifamily and office, as well as downtown land use designations. Because it is close to the single family high, it's in the transition area design district, which limits the heights of the buildings as well as several other things. So the, I thought, although you're not taking action on this, I thought it would be helpful to have kind of a comparison of what these, what the change might be like. So the, as I said, the R30 is the only land use, or the only zoning code within the multifamily high land use category. And those are intended to provide moderate residential density. The NMU district is the only zoning code within NMU. And that intends to provide a mix of retail service, office and residential uses with an emphasis on neighborhood retail and service uses. The height, because this is in the transition area design district, the R30 has a height of, limit of 30 feet, but it can have bonuses up to 40 feet. For NMU, because it's within the transition area design district, it's, has a height limit of 45 feet and has no bonuses. The uses are also slightly different. R30 is multifamily housing and NMU requires first floor commercial and multifamily housing or hotel. The public comment, we've received 38 comments through February 9th, Thursday. The Lockleven Community Association, which is the community association the Northwest Bellevue side of 100th that surrounds this property. They have been very engaged in the process. Key issues that were mentioned in the comments are process related comments, building, high retail, hotel uses, parking, and the number of housing. Of course, we have continuous community engagement throughout the entire process. The public comment can be seen on the CPA webpage and it's updated periodically as comments are submitted. Public comment can be submitted to me at my email address. And it will get posted onto the website as I receive it. Planning commission will likely set the public hearing for a threshold review in March, which will take more comments. And there's always opportunities for comments at planning commission and as we heard tonight at city council. So the next step, planning commission will study the geographic scope and decide whether to expand this to neighboring properties. And they will likely set a public hearing in March for the threshold review. April, city council will determine whether to include it in the CPA work program. Again, this is information only, there is no action to at this time. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Change my view here. There we go. Councilmember Robertson, I know you're snacking, but your dinner, your Valentine's dinner. But as a liaison to that planning commission, would you like to start us off?
Sure, thank you. Eating my Valentine's dinner with my loved ones tonight. All of you, anyway. Yes, I was listening though carefully. So, yeah, this is, as we all know, the, we do this every year when we have privately initiated comp plans. The planning commission is starting to get comments. They had at least nine pages of comments submitted, as well as I think they had public comment at their meeting last week. I had a couple of questions. The, the change, one of the questions we ask at threshold review is whether there's changed, significantly changed circumstances. And with the Northwest Bellevue comp plan just having been amended last year, I'm wondering if the significantly changed circumstances analysis is based on the last general comp plan or whether it's also based on the neighborhood area plan? So that's a question for staff, I just don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I can go ahead and answer that one, Councilmember Robertson. We will be using the new Northwest Bellevue plan. And then, as you know, we do have the rest of the comprehensive plan as well. But we will be using that new separated plan that was adopted.
Okay, it's, I just would comment that it's a pretty high burden to show substantially changed circumstances when it's been less than 60 days since we adopted that plan. So, but I'll be very curious to see the planning commission take this up. And I'm sure that they will do a yeoman's job of analyzing the code requirements on whether it meets the standards for further study and geographic scoping. Thanks.
Councilmembers on, do you have any comments or questions? No, okay, Deputy Mayor, oh yeah, and then Councilmember Stokes.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for the presentation this evening. Kate, I just wanted to get a better sense of the 38 comments submitted thus far on this. I appreciate you kind of calling out the key issues, but can you give me a sense of, because so far, the emails that I've seen, I think there is quite a bit of concern regarding, regarding this from Lockleven as well as other parts of the city, so, or surrounding area. So can you give me a little bit more sound, the 38, would you say are concerned about this? Would you say that's the vast majority of the 38?
Yes, I would say that's the vast majority of concerns with the change in the land use category.
And the vast majority of these, of these folks are in a close proximity to, to this area, would you?
I don't have addresses for all of the commenters, but the ones that have submitted their address are in close proximity.
Okay, great. And then, and I, excuse me, I'm sure you mentioned it once before, but what are the additional outreach and additional opportunities for, for folks to weigh in? Weigh in on this as well. Can you can you um please describe that again?
Yes, um so uh we take, so the. Notice goes to the property owners within five hundred feet of um the site and we post signage. Um I have taken phone calls from people that have walked by and have called uh my phone number from the sign. Um they haven't submitted written comments, they've just. Uh and uh. That we always take um uh email comment uh as well, which is posted on the sign and in the uh. Now all of the notice uh options.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I just just wanted to make it clear for for the public on this is this is. Cause the the emails we've gotten and all are almost assuming that the council could just uh stop this right now. The role is not for council at this point and this is a process to go through and um it's um. You know, we'll make a decision some other time and we welcome all the comments that come in on this, but just want to make sure that people don't have an expectation that somehow or other we're gonna. Uh take a vote now um and we're just listening in the process of go forward and then we will eventually come back to council. After planning commission has given recommendations and staff has given recommendations and then we'll have that conversation. Is that that's correct, right?
Yeah, Emile, I was going to ask you if you could put up the uh timeline again. And just kind of show the decision-making moments that are possible. On that timeline and tonight is obviously not one of them.
Yeah, Kate, if you could go back to the graphic.
There you go.
Yeah, there it is.
So the the next step is uh planning commission to work on the so-called geographic scoping, so that happens on the twenty-third. Planning commission then holds a public hearing about the proposal. And at that uh point, they make a recommendation to council that would come back likely in the April timeframe and that would be. The threshold decision by the council if you want to include it in the work program or not, based on the planning commission's recommendation. So that that's a key decision point. If the application were part of the work program, then the last four boxes come into play. So that's the final review, planning commission recommendation, then final decision maker with the city council.
So the planning commission meeting in March and the city council meeting in April, if the planning commission uh. Brings it to us to review, right? They may not necessarily do that.
They will have a a recommendation one way or the other, so we'll be bringing their recommendation, whatever it is to you in the um in the April time period.
Right, okay, so we'll see it either way. Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification. Any other comments or questions? Uh councilmember Lee.
Uh I got a question about the councilmember Robertson's question and. Yeah, staff's answer, I'm not sure what does that mean? When you said the old or the new comp plan is the use as the um baseline, whatever. Uh how does that affect? The reason, I mean CPA.
Review. Yeah, so the um uh the city is uh broken down into a series of subareas. Um this property is in the Northwest Bellevue subarea. That that uh subarea was the focus of the Northwest Bellevue Neighborhood Area Planning Effort that occurred over the past. Uh year and a half or so, so that uh plan was adopted by council in the December timeframe of two thousand twenty-one. So that subarea is the so-called new subarea in place for that that geography of the city. There still is the rest of the entire comp plan, so this is a a part of the overall so-called comp plan that pertains to that. Subarea, but we still have all the other elements of the general elements of the plan as well that would be pertinent to this discussion. So hopefully that clarifies the previous Northwest Bellevue subarea and the new one that council adopted in December.
Councilmembers Robertson mentioned about the sixty day, you know, hard to meet that, or what does that mean?
Um I believe councilmember Robertson was uh referring to one of the threshold decision criteria about change circumstances, which will be. One that uh will be uh walking the uh planning commission through in the uh coming uh month or so, so that councilmember Robertson was. Uh good to point out that that is a key uh, one of the key uh decision criteria there for threshold review.
She mentioned it's difficult to meet that, what does that mean? So.
Can I? Is this about what I meant? Can I weigh in, Mayor? Conrad, um or councilmember Lee, what I meant was. A- as you know, one of the things that the planning commission will determine um. When they, at the initial hearing in March, the recommendation they will make is whether we should include this in the in the work plan. And that decision is called threshold review and I don't have the code in front of me or have it memorized, but always the tricky. Uh component to um that has to be satisfied for something to get put onto the work plan is that. The applicant has to show change circumstances and it's changed circumstances since the comp plan was last updated. And since we just updated the comp plan about sixty days ago for this subarea, it's difficult. Uh if in my opinion, it will be a challenge for them to show that there's been substantially changed circumstances in the last sixty days. That warrant us changing the comp plan. That was that was just a commentary on my part, but that's what I meant by that. I'm sorry if I was. A little bit confusing.
I just want to be clear, that's.
Yeah, not what I meant, but thank you.
Just assuming, just assuming that the new, new uh, what's the word, new. Uh plan or new update is the same as the old one, right? So.
Well, okay, and this is obviously.
Okay.
This is a good time to ask questions, but we're not going to have a full discussion of it. Have you finished your questions, councilmember Lee?
Uh, yeah, I have, thank you.
Okay, councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I think um, I mean, we we don't want to prejudge this in any way or. I mean, to me, th- this is not, it's just a conversation and um we should give the planning commission full. Um scope to come up with their, do their conversations and come up with their decision and then we can weigh in on which of these factors are more important than the others. I'm just. Little concerned we don't start making, you know, kind of in influencing the decision.
I think this is just a clarification of the timeline of what we're going to be going through. Thank you, councilmember Stokes.
It's just the question of the.
So, so um we, anybody else have?
Okay.
Questions about the process? We've seen the timeline. I think it's pretty clear as to where the pivot points are on that and I'm looking forward to uh. Seeing what the planning commission recommends. Okay, moving on, we have another uh study session item. Mr. McComman, would you like to introduce?
Uh thank you again, Mayor Robinson. The next item before the council regards advancing work on curb space management. This topic was last before the council in November of two thousand twenty-one authorizing a consulting agreement to support the analysis. And staff will seek direction from council to advance elements of the comprehensive plan to the appropriate commissions for potential amendment and to recommend a curb management plan. Presenting this evening are Andrew Singleakis, Transportation Director, and Chris Iverson, Senior Transportation Planner. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Singleakis.
Well, thank you, um Deputy City Manager McComman, uh Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse and uh council members. And I would like to introduce Chris Iverson, who's the project manager for the curb management plan. And curb management is uh an emerging issue and Bellevue has been at the forefront. Most notably through our um selection by Transportation for America back in uh twenty twenty. Um along with Boston and Minneapolis to study curb uh behavior. Uh and you can go to the next slide, Chris. Uh the purpose of this uh work session uh tonight is both A. Uh to let the council and the public know that this body of work is about to begin. Uh but we also have two specific um asks. Uh the first is for the council to refer this work to the Transportation Commission. And the second one is to for to refer potential comp plan language to the planning commission and the transportation commission. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris.
Great, thank you, Andrew. Um Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, members of council. Um thank you for having me to discuss curb management. Um so just a quick agenda for tonight, um we'll kind of do a quick overview of the the project at hand. Um review the approach to the work that we're conducting. Um and begin discussing the comprehensive plan amendments that pertain to this project specifically. Um so, kind of before we get going on the actual uh material, I think it's important to. Uh kind of get grounded so everybody is aware of the concept of curb management. As Andrew alluded, this is a. It's a, it's sort of a twist on a on a decades-old concept. Um we are trying to figure out how to best optimize our city right-of-way uh for the myriad of use cases that we experience. Um and this quote from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, I think, puts it very, very well. Uh curbside management seeks to inventory, optimize, allocate and manage the curb space to maximize mobility. And access for the wide variety of curb demands. So when we talk about curb management, um historically, you can think about curb management as some something as simple as on-street parking. Um activation for bus stops, travel lanes. Um but especially in the last ten years, we've seen this growth of new mobility services like um Uber and Lyft ride-share services. Uh in the last few years, uh especially before the pandemic, we saw several employers start running their own shuttles. Um the images on the bottom of this slide kind of show just as a a spattering of those use cases ranging from. Transit and bicycle access to uh pickup and drop-off zones. To uh some of the more place-making and activation concepts like on-street dining. Uh which is the image in the top left, that the very successful pilot project that was uh launched at Old Bellevue last summer. So these are all uses of the curb. Um and it's important to start becoming a little bit more deliberate with how we conduct our our uh our city business at in this space. Um so, I think it begs the question, why are we approaching this now? Why are we deciding to engage in the development of this current management plan? Um I think there's three main takeaways here. The first one simply is that Bellevue is growing very quickly. Uh especially in our urban core neighborhoods of downtown Bell Red, Wilberton and East Main. And uh because of this growth, it's placing new and growing burdens on our infrastructure, as we all know. Um and this translates to uh placing burdens on the curb side. So as we think about curb management, it's going to become more and more important to be deliberate about how to prioritize and manage these spaces. Um kind of at a on a more national scale, again, I mentioned this before, the increase of new mobility services. Place these burdens at the curb side that were traditionally just used for private vehicle movement or or basic uses. Um and finally, you know, again, the especially in the last two years, some of the responses. To the COVID nineteen pandemic, like some of the food priority pickup zones that were installed in Old Bellevue. And the all fresco on-street dining program um have inspired innovative strategies and. In curb site areas to kind of think about how we use rights of way a little bit differently to add to the livability of the city. The the body of this work um will tackle a lot of different things and this is just a summary of some of the scoping items. Uh that are part of this plan. As a reminder, uh council actually approved uh via consent item. Uh a professional services contract back in November of two thousand twenty-one to begin work on the current management plan. Um and for the last few months, staff have been working with that team to kind of start building existing conditions. Um and put a put a a vision and values framework around uh rooting curb decisions and uh. It'll eventually lead into uh policy development as well. Um but the 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 bullets after this as well kind of talk about some of the the meat, so to speak, of the of the actual project. The the conceptualized prioritization framework for curb use. Um that's really speaking to how we should figure out ways to uh be more specific and deliberate about. Which streets and which street typologies should receive a very specific curb use. If we have an arterial street, for example, we might want to prioritize movement. Uh if we have a more local street with retail activity, that's something that could be better suited for place-making or other uses. Um so as we get into the development of this project, that will be a very important component. One of the other components too is um analyzing options to establish an actual dedicated curb management program to help manage these various curb uses. Um right now, the way that the city conducts business such as at the curb side is relatively ad hoc. It's more reactionary by nature and what we're trying to do is kind of be proactive um and more long-range with our thinking. About how uh curb spaces are are used and managed. Um the last two bullets here are more uh more internal-facing and and more practitioner guides than anything else. Uh a curbside playbook will help both internal and external stakeholders. Kind of know where to go and sort of streamline a lot of these processes at the city level for how to activate or change curb uses. Um and then we'll ultimately have an organizational and staffing framework recommendations in the plan itself to figure out how we can actually roll this out over time. Uh the next two images are uh were developed by our consulting team. They do a good job of illustrating kind of the wide variety of use cases at the curb. Um because what we're talking about is really infrastructure management. Um and with poor curb management, that really has ripple effects uh on on in multiple ways. So the image on on the left side of this image, you can see here that the yellow vehicle stopped in the middle of the of the travel lane and is now blocking uh blocking a bus. I'm sure that everybody here has kind of experienced something like that. The the green vehicle is actually delivering a package, so one of the. One of the big elements of curb management is trying to accommodate the rise of e-commerce and more freight activity uses. Um in our right-of-way, some of the stuff that cannot be accommodated on private sites. The other thing about curb management is that, again, it is tied to infrastructure very directly. And the way that we've historically developed our rights of way have been to accommodate peak traffic volumes, so. Um because of this, we have to really uh sort of plan for this high level of demand. And therefore, curbs are often used as travel lanes, especially in in downtown Bellevue. Now, when we think about long-term, um some of the things that we want to see at the curb again are more deliberate uses. So you can see here that with a better and more deliberate curb management framework, we've not only. Uh been able to mitigate some congestion, but we've also allocated more specific spaces for. Ride share for e-commerce and freight delivery and we've also carved more space for electric vehicle charging and for curbside dining uses. With some of these efficiencies, we can also start exploring more innovative uses of the curb space like creating dedicated transit and bike lanes on some of our streets. So as we get into more long-range thinking, we can start imagining the way that we want our streets to look into the future. Um again, tonight, we're here uh asking council for direction on two different items. Um one is to direct Transportation Commission to develop policy recommendations through the comprehensive plan amendment work plan process. Uh sort of similar to the previous item, uh these happen annually. But the city and the city council can initiate a CPA at any time. That's the that's the difference between the private initiated and the city-initiated work plans. Um so this is the city init- city-initiated work plan that we're taking direction for. The other item that we're uh seeking direction for is to actually have Transportation Commission begin developing. Content within the curb management plan itself. Um more specifically, coming up with recommendations regarding the current prioritization framework. And developing uh some recommendations regarding curb programs. Uh so that is, that is the the material that we will be seeking to engage with Transportation Commission uh in two thousand twenty-two. Very briefly, uh I wanted to talk about some of the more specific comp plan amendments. Um and the language tied to that as it relates to curb management. Um about eight or nine years ago, can Transportation Commission actually worked um with staff on developing the downtown transportation plan. And there are actual uh language or there are actual complaint policies tied to curb management within the downtown subarea plan. Um again, those are more reactive to an environment from ten years ago. And that's bit a big part of the reason why we will want to uh go back and and start developing new language uh in reflection of changed conditions. Um the other thing too is that, you know, that a lot of those policies are within the downtown subarea plan. And not necessarily within other elements, specifically the transportation element, so. Our our CPA approach would amend or add policies both in downtown subarea and in the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. and in the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. Just a very brief project timeline. Again, like I mentioned before, the last few months, staff have been working with our consulting team on developing existing conditions and having some kickoff meetings and discussions. And we're going to start beginning work on developing some of the the meat and recommendations of the the project. Tonight, at this meeting, it's sort of officially kicks off our stakeholder and public engagement process. So after this, we will be in discussion with both Transportation and Planning Commission soon. We will be conducting various focus groups with interested parties like businesses, developers, and residents to try to get more information about what their experiences at the curbside are. And we will also be having some discussions with the the Bellevue Downtown Association and the Bellevue Chamber in the in the coming weeks to introduce this project. At this stage, you see the project timeline here goes through November of twenty twenty-two. Ultimately, depending on workload at the staff level, the schedule of the final adoption of the current management plan is subject to change pending development and and discussion. So this is just a rough outline of of how we're intending on approaching this project at this stage. Just some very brief next steps. Later this week, we will actually be launching a public survey and interactive map on the engaging Bellevue dot com platform. So keep your eyes peeled for that. And that will allow us to start gaining some public sentiment around how curb uses are received and used in Bellevue. And like I mentioned before, we have some upcoming Transportation Commission and Planning Commission meetings to discuss these topics. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Andrew for any concluding thoughts.
Right, what what's before you tonight is really referring this to Transportation Commission to evolve the plan and do the work. And then also referring the conplan language that needs to be modified through the planning commission and the transportation commission.
Okay, great. Thank you for the presentation. You know, when people ask me what I think the future of the city is going to look like, this is the transformative work that's really going to change the experience of living in Bellevue, and I'm so excited to see this huge process around this. And I I know that all the restaurants who were able to move into outside dining and curbside dining and pickup and all that are really interested in this work. So thank you for initiating it. Councilmember Zahn, let's start with you as liaison to the Transportation Commission.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm excited that this is launching. Thank you, Chris and Andrew. I was actually on the Transportation Commission when we worked on that downtown transportation sub-area planning and remembering that we put in specific language around curb management. And at that time, we also talked about how we might activate the right of way in those spaces. So literally, we know that with COVID, that's the very thing that would happen where we found a way to be able to activate those spaces for dining. So you never know what might come up as you're imagining in the plan. So I'm super excited that we're launching this effort. You know, the the genesis of maximizing mobility, safety, and access really fits in with our Vision Zero strategies as well of our safe approach and our safe systems of how do we be more strategic, more proactive, more predictive, so that we're reducing incidences between pets, bikes, and cars and delivery trucks, how to leverage innovation, and having that vision and values framework so that as we are making decisions and policies around downtown, how we might be more intentional about those decisions that are really grounded in how we best maximize the limited curb space that's available in our downtown is huge. So I am super excited that we're getting going. I did have one question for you, and that is that as we bring the consultant on board and we start the work of the public engagement and updating the plan, is that going to include collaboration with Anne Goodchild and the work of the Supply Chain Transportation and Logistics Center at UW where their Urban Freight Lab, it looks like they have some final fifty-feet toolkit that is available for cities, and I just wonder if we have such an amazing resource up in University of Washington. And I know a couple of years ago, they had done some pilots with as we look at deliveries of of goods or services into downtown, how we might look at delivery lockers or some of those other tools. So is that going to be part of this work as well to leverage some of that work that's already done by by UW in the Urban Freight Lab?
Yeah, great question. Thank you, Councilmembers. On the short answer is yes, we will certainly be engaging with the Urban Freight Lab. They've actually been great partners with staff over the last several years. You might recall that the city actually was a partner agency in a in a grant from the Department of Energy a few years ago to look at reducing emissions for those last-mile delivery systems. And we also worked very closely with the Urban Freight Lab as we did work regarding our curb pilot project in association in association with Transportation for America. So we've had some discussions about that. I think the the main difference, though, is that, you know, those are they focus very specifically on the freight activity, which is certainly a large and important component of the curb. But what we're doing is certainly more holistic. We're not just looking at freight, but we're looking at passengers, we're looking at place-making, we're looking at rethinking the way that we do parking. So it is more comprehensive by nature. So it it'll certainly be an element, but it won't it won't take the spotlight the entire time.
Okay, that makes sense. And then is there opportunities for grant funding as we move forward to implement some of the the curb management changes that we might make?
Always looking for grant funding, of course. The I think that there's some promising opportunities from the the federal infrastructure package that are tied to technology implementation especially. So I think that all remains to be seen what opportunities we might have.
Great, thank you so much. Super excited.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mary. Yes, also very excited about this. So glad that we're getting on it and look forward to that to to this work. Just a couple of quick questions for you, but again, Andrew and Chris, thank you for the great presentation. First, are you also going to be taken into account as part of this curb management program, new technologies? For example, maybe autonomous shuttles, autonomous vehicles, et cetera. Would that be part of this this plan and discussion as well as in terms of how that would fit into this and any requirements that those types of autonomous vehicles or shuttles might need in order in order to to work within this curb management plan?
You know, we're we're currently working on a autonomous vehicle vision plan, kind of doing it internally, but it dovetails really well with the curb management work that we'll be doing. So the answer to that question is yes.
Fantastic. And and then the cyclist always always happy to see the 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 bike lanes there. And I'm just curious, how does this mesh with our bike-ped plan and bike network? How 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 will this work or or intersect with 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 those existing plans?
So as we start developing the prioritization framework, like I mentioned before, we're hoping to reference our already existing adopted plans to guide some of those recommendations. So both the pet bike plan, but also the Transit Master Plan and some of the elements from the Mobility Implementation Plan that is wrapping up here soon. They'll all feed into this current management plan, kind of create a a more comprehensive assessment of how these spaces should be used.
Okay, fantastic. And then last question is really glad to see that you're reaching out to some of the key stakeholders, this is the chamber and the BDA. It sounds like the survey will be the primary tool in which businesses, stakeholders, residents will be able to voice their 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 opinions on this. So how are we going to widely distribute that? What's our what's our plan for outreach that outreach there so we can make sure that we're hearing from all the all the right parties and stakeholders and 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 residents? And those that, you know, may have some expertise in this area or want to share how how other cities do it or how they've seen other cities do it. So how how about how are we going about sharing this far and wide across the city?
So we are trying to get the word out simply because, you know, the concept of curb management is sort of a mystery to the broader public, and I think part of this is an education campaign. It's it's the it's the most important piece of infrastructure that nobody thinks about. So in addition to the public survey, you know, we'll certainly be advertising that. We will be conducting some very specific focus groups with interested parties, like I mentioned before, businesses, you know, key residents, developer interests, and mobility activists and advocates. And we're also, in addition to the focus groups, going to be executing what we're calling a curb summit event, which is going to be bringing all of them into the same room to start workshops and kind of long-range thinking about how we can plan our our streets in the future. So those are the three main approaches, and I think pending how much reception we get, we might retool and try to re-target that outreach later in the year.
Great, thank you.
Also, really, I thought I saw your hand up, and then Councilmember Robertson, followed by Barksdale.
Thank you. Well, I absolutely support this. This is what I've been working on for the last many, many, many years. Timing is everything. So, you know, it's now happening. I appreciate the presentation that, you know, the last couple of years, COVID nineteen, really gave us a lot of creative way of doing things. And when you talk about creativity, you talk about technology. And so, but despite the timing is everything, we also, I like the emphasis by the by the staff that we need to be proactive. We need to be ready when the timing takes happens, you know, when opportunity comes. If you're not ready, you miss it. So I believe that being proactive, we are ready, we know what components, what things we need to be looking at, what partners we have to have, what issues, what opportunities we have to be engaging on, be prepared. So I really like it a lot. I I think this is going to be a real exciting thing. And many things, you know, have been mentioned. And we're connecting this with autonomous vehicle that proves that Vision Zero, you know, that's working with Metro, Sun Transit, you know, all these folks. When you're going to talk about multimodal vehicles. So with this technology, including obviously curb management is very important piece of it. It's for the city to demonstrate with real partners, real people, you know, how the technology can work to benefit, you know, our partners and stakeholders. So I think, you know, we're talking about safety, Vision Zero, multimodal system. But I want to make sure that we don't forget our stakeholders being businesses, you know, I mean, one for clear definite inclusion is Amazon, you know, I mean, we talk about e-delivery and all that stuff, and they're big in this, and they're working towards even if the city doesn't, but we are a very key part of making it work. So I think these are the folks, including Metro, Sun Transit, and the many, many electric vehicle businesses. And they have a technology all ready to go, but they need a place to play. I think Bellevue is the ideal place. We are ready to play. We're ready to be the pilot to show that this can work. So that's why I'm working with the chamber, with the public. You know, the technology has to be accepted. And to be accepted, they need to see that, you know, it's 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 good, it is, it can work, work well, and they see the benefit. So I really believe that this is a very exciting thing that can lead to a lot of great stuff. And one thing, you know, when also was asked about federal funding, absolutely. I think federal government needs to use this as a model to show the rest of the country you know, how it could work with the urban environment, with the with the transportation environment that, you know, we're looking at, which is going to be heavily technology-based. And that we show how we can address our transportation system as well. So I'm really excited about this. I see the potential, and I see that we need to be proactive. That's the reason why, you know, we talked about it a number of years ago, and but, you know, we we're waiting. But this now, I think we're, I'm glad to put this on the top of the scale, and we will be ready when other people are ready. And the people that we are working with, we are making sure that they, without help, they can be ready. So I'm excited about it, and I support it. Thank you.
Councilmember Robertson, followed by Councilmember Barksdale and then Stokes.
Thank you. Yeah, I like my colleagues. I've been excited to have this come to council and have made sure it was in the work plan and when we did our last budget in twenty twenty. So yes, the question is, do we have support on the council to initiate a comprehensive plan amendment work plan? My vote on that would be yes. But I want to have a couple of comments. So I think that Deputy Mayor raised a really interesting point about tech that got me thinking. There's there's, I definitely think we need to be looking at the high-tech autonomous vehicles. But we should also be looking at how we can use technology to make the curb work better, not just will it work for an autonomous vehicle, but how can we do geo-taking or geo-netting or letting people know when they're using their apps, you know, what where if the Uber driver is looking for a place in downtown, okay, there's four spots in this six-blocks area where I, you know, which are approved for pickup. So using using the information to push that out to people so that people know where to go. So that's one. Two, on the making sure that we have the impacts on pets and bikes taken into consideration, whether it's if we need to put a whole bunch of signs and, you know, kiosks in the work in the in the sidewalk, making sure that we do that in a way that works for pedestrians, making sure that we don't put parking where the door swing zone is going to kneecap a bicyclist when they're going by in the bike lane. Those kind of things, we need to make sure that we make all the users use the road and sidewalk space in a way that's harmonious. The one of the things I also thought about, I was looking at these comp plan policies, and it talked about curb-sized spaces for curb-sized spaces for. You know, there's opportunities here, particularly as we do outreach with the business community, development community, that we could create, or not we could create, people who have private property in the areas where there's a lot of need for this could create pickup drop-offs, and that might be very good for their business if they have a, you know, Uber, Lyft, you know, drop-off pickup zone or a package. A lot of private businesses are doing that already with the grocery stores you can park or the any retail stores, park here and they'll bring your delivery out. That all started during COVID, so we don't want to overlook that as a resource as we're looking for ways to serve this need. So and then this, oh, we want to think about idling. If we're creating a lot of spaces for people to wait, if people are idling out there for long periods of time, that's not good for the environment, it's not good for people walking and biking by. So we want to think about how we can provide the space without creating a lot of excess emissions from cars sitting there idling for way too long. And then finally, the the we're going to want to look, and this is way down the road. But we're going to want to figure out how we can do this in a way, like I already talked about urban design, but that's that's enforceable. Where whether it's paint or signage, we need to make sure that at the end of the at the end of the line, after we've done all this, that are all of our codes work together so that the parking code, traffic code work with the goals and policies we're trying to create. Because at the end of the day, that's that's where the enforcement won't come from. So and and if this is also going to be something, I guess, that we're looking at asking people who are developing new facilities to add that's on their part of the property line, we should maybe consider an incentive system for that to create a public space on their property. It benefits their property, but it also benefits the general public. Thanks.
Councilmember Barksdale, followed by Councilmember Stokes.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Didn't know I could get so be so interested in curbs, but this is an interesting topic after all. I do support the the requested direction here. And I I actually have seen people stopping on Bellevue Way to let somebody out or to for somebody to get into the car and stop traffic in the far right lane. Uh to let somebody out or to for somebody to get into the car and stop traffic in the far right lane. So I think it's a definitely a need. Uh a couple of things that I wanted that I'm interested in seeing. Um so as we think about like our community-based organizations, especially. Um cultural organizations and and festivals and um other other. Events that allow for the community to come together. I think it'd be interesting to make sure or factor that into. This curb management program so that um we under we we can figure out how that interfaces with the curb as people are moving. Between the street and the curb during those events and um maybe makes it easier to set the street up. For festivals or other types of events. Um and then the other piece is um, I was curious about how. Don't have to discuss this part, but how the observation, uh I think there's an opportunity to leverage tactical urbanism. Or generally whether that's for understanding how people move through, so uh maybe on a less busier street. Setting up certain things like events that sort of allow people to move through and see how they. Um experience the curb or uh I'll leave it there. That's really all I have. Thank you.
Kate, did you want to weigh in on that idea?
On the tactical urbanism?
Yeah, that's intriguing.
Yeah, I think that that is um something that uh uh could be explored. Um I I. I'm also on the curb management team, so that's something that we could definitely um discuss and talk about the ways that it could be most effective.
Great, thank you. Yeah, okay, Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I think this has been a very, very uh good conversation. I really appreciate the work on the Conference of Plan Amendment and it is really uh. Moving us into addressing uh current and future needs and um as some of the people have said it. That, you know, we're just not looking back at the plans we did ten years ago. Uh things have changed a little bit. So I'm very excited about this. Uh and I appreciate the particularly a couple of questions that the deputy mayor brought up at the beginning. Um to look at those and um I think this is great and look forward to seeing it uh go forward and um would support it wholeheartedly.
Thank you. Chris, one thing I uh I know you're already gonna do this, but you didn't mention it, the old Bellevue Merchants Association. You'll be working with them as well and any other merchants associations throughout the city, I'm sure.
That is correct. Yeah, we have uh OBMA identified in our focus group. It involves a handful of retailers in that area.
Terrific. Thank you. Okay, is there a more deputy mayor?
Certainly is. I moved to direct staff to initiate the CPA proposals into the twenty twenty two CPA work program. To incorporate policies in the transportation element and downtown sub area plan related to curb management. And to direct work with the Transportation Commission, the community and staff to prepare a curb management plan recommendation to council.
Second.
All those in favor, I, I, any opposed? Okay, terrific, that passes. So um I want, yeah, thank you, Andrew and Chris and Kate. Um I want to tell everybody that we are canceling the February twenty second meeting. Uh it's spring break. We are missing a number of council members and there wasn't a whole lot of things on the agenda that we could do with a. With a small group. So uh we're just gonna cancel that meeting and resume on the twenty ninth. Uh we are now going to conclude the public portion of tonight's meeting. Council will recess into the executive session for about twenty minutes. And the meeting will be adjourned from the executive session. Council members, you just received an email from the club. For the link to take you to the executive session. So please go to your emails and click on that new link and I will see you there. Thank you.